If we can reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss the superintendent evaluation. If we could stand for the fledgeable allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our mission under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Willow Bear.
Catherine Natto.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Delenbaugh.
John Wallston.
Meredith Moriarty.
John McPhillips.
And Bob Teigen and Christine Beck are not able to be here tonight. I'm guessing that we have a few pig students with us. I'm welcome. Thanks for coming. Your obligation is to stay until the meeting is over or nine o'clock, whichever one comes first. And we do have sign out sheets up here, so just make sure that you guys sign out before you leave so that you get credit for being here. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 3rd, 2023 regular board meeting. So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries? And then item B, it is recommended by the Board of Education, it is, sorry, let me start that again. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 16th, 2023 special board meeting of the annual budget vote and Board of Education election. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries? Item three, our meeting reports, and first is our superintendent's report. Sure, thank you. I'd like to recognize some of our students and educators. The YMCA hosted a 24th annual awards ceremony, recognizing outstanding students and educators. Eight Bethlehem students and five of our teachers were honored at the breakfast. I'd like to congratulate the following students. Christian Franchini, who is actually here tonight, and he didn't know I was going to announce this either, right?
He actually gave her a pen.
Oh, you want a pen? Do you want a special pen? Come on down.
See, it's karma.
There you go. Connor Riley, Ella Drexler, Halligan Hossar, Rachel Hammond, Sarah Hayes, Shen Henson, and Zachary Price, and some of our teachers and administrators who were recognized is Alex Messier, Kelly Chevrononi, Nick Ferguson, Nick Petracconi, and Nicole Conway. So I'd like to congratulate all of them for their efforts in being recognized. Also, I'd like to thank our school community for overwhelmingly supporting our proposed budget and taking the time to come out to vote. I'd also like to thank all of our staff in the Board of Education who spent months developing the budget so that we could put forth one that the community could support. And that is my report for tonight. Any questions for Jody?
Congratulations to John for making it through his first completed budget.
Budget cycle. Yay!
Thank you all for your support over the past several months, and special thanks to Brittany Barrett, District Clerk, for helping me through the process. You can take the rest of the year off.
John, would you like a pen?
Next up is the board report. I will echo Jody's thanks to the community for their support yesterday. I also wanted to make a special note of our jazz bands and choral groups that performed yesterday. I had a chance to listen to the concert, and it was terrific. And I also had a chance to look at all of the art that is on display as part of the senior art show. And to board members, if you guys haven't had a chance to look at it, I definitely recommend it. It's sort of outside the cafeteria and then also up by the front, near the auditorium. That's all I have. Does anybody else have anything to add?
I attended the eighth grade concert this week. I'm assuming the other middle school concerts were also this week. Orchestra, band, and choir, they did a wonderful job. It was really great to see them. And Mr. Klugman actually pulled everyone up on stage before the concert even started to talk about this year's eighth grade class, how they started middle school in the strict COVID year, and how hard it was to stick with singing and playing musical instruments when you couldn't actually sing and play musical instruments. So how cowardly it were for those kids with really sticking through it so that we could get to this point in eighth grade where they were really made beautiful music. And I also just wanted to thank all of our district staff who worked all day yesterday, on their feet all day yesterday, and also the poll workers for volunteering their time as well.
Anybody else? I don't think we've had any committee meetings since our last meeting, but just double-checking. Okay. Next would be our student reports. Do we have anybody here from high school student senate?
Hi, I'm Yuna Chung, the secretary of the student senate. Here at the high school, we've been seeing many clubs hold events that help the students come together as a school. For example, today, the SAD club held a day long event where many groups came to the gym and held substance abuse awareness activities that helped the students to learn. And we also had the pleasure of listening to our guest speaker, Stephen Hill, who came and shared his story regarding substance abuse. And we're also looking forward to having the Alana Club hold our Asian Food Festival, which is this upcoming Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here from the middle school? I have to say, I did go, I went to the Asian Food Festival last year, and it was very delicious. So we need something to do on Friday evening. I recommend stopping by. Next is our presentation this evening, and we have a presentation by Bethlehem junior Sean Meek and Kathy Johnson.
So as you mentioned, tonight, we have a very special presentation entitled Bethlehem junior Sean Meek shares how he navigates BC with his visual impairment. So the way this is going to be set up tonight, I'm going to stand here and have some things to bring over to them, but Sean Meek is over here to my right, and standing next to him is Amy Pierce, who is his teacher of the visually impaired. The two of them are going to begin, and there's going to be materials that they will be sharing at some points, so we'll be moving around a little bit, but I'm going to let them start. We're going to use the monitors. So, okay?
Hi, I'm Sean. I'm a junior at BC. I have been in Bethlehem since I was in kindergarten. I also run track and cross country for the school of teams. Outside of school, I'm with, I'm an Eagle Scout with Troop 75 in Delmar. After I leave BC, I'm interested in majoring in computer science or business. My top three colleges are Genesee, Binghamton, and Northeastern.
So when we're looking at definition of functional vision, we're thinking, how does a student use any residual vision that they might have? Can it be used to read efficiently in the classroom, or do they just have enough vision where big signs are visible to them, or even just light changes? And if they do have usable vision, how can we, as educators, help the student use it in the classroom and in the community? So whether or not visual access is possible for a student, we need to consider what is the student going to need to be successful in the classroom, but also comfortable while doing their work. So in these images, you can see that Sean is with his formal setup for testing. He has his Braille document, a device he uses to write with, and a monitor. And on the right, he is using both touch and vision to access a graphic, and to, you know, he's using his fingers to read it, but also his vision to find things that are on the graphic. So what we have to ask ourselves, looking at this, is would I be comfortable reading like that for a long time if I had to be as close as he is to pictures or words? And what we also need to remember is, even though there's sometimes a presence of functional vision, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's enough for that to be the student's best way to learn.
I can use my vision to read short amounts of print or navigate on a tablet for a short period of time. In my left eye, I have about two inches worth of usable vision after magnifying the text on a screen, and I have to be about three and a half inches away from the screen to read it. After reading print for too long, however, it can give me a headache, or my eyes may be tired or strained. This is why I use Braille for a long period of time for reading. I also have zero vision in my right eye.
So we also have to consider, when we're working with students with visual impairments, all of these environmental factors that can play into how they're able to function in the classroom and how it affects their remaining vision. Students often need items that are highly contrasted, like this slide is the better way for him to read, with a white text on a black background. A visual clutter can make it difficult to pick out specific items if there's just too much going on. A glare from a window or overhead lighting, if it's way too bright, can cause problems with reflections, or just make the paper too bright and hard to read. Some students are sensitive to high levels of noise, and if there's consistently or constantly changing layouts, or people leaving bags in the aisles in classrooms, that poses a hazard for tripping, or it can be disorienting if there's always changing room setups. On the left, we're seeing an example of how being near a window can make it difficult to read because of the reflection. On the right, I put in a picture of my office because there's a lot going on there. There's a Braille textbook that's up on the top shelf, that's only a couple chapters of a MacBook, printers and monitors. So in this current situation, the students I have in this room aren't negatively impacted by this layout. However, if I had a student with a processing difficulty who was impacted by too much visual clutter, I would probably have to remove the lights because they'd be distracting, reduce the implementation down to one or two textbooks, whatever the student needs most, with a lot of distance between them, depending on how much the student can take in at once, and I could possibly need to use bright tape to highlight their location on the shelf. So while we'd like to use a lot of colors and visuals in classrooms, especially at the elementary level, it's important to be aware of how the clutter may impact your student's ability to process or locate the items that they need.
The environmental factor that impacts me the most, that we mentioned in this slide, is changes in lighting. My eyes require extra time to adjust from above changes of lighting. This is especially from light to dark, so inside, when it's a really bright day to, or, sorry, outside, when it's a bright day to inside, just extra time to adjust is necessary.
So this leads into how we look into writing accommodations and modifications into the individualized education plan, or the IEP. So in some examples we have on this slide of poor contrast are the blue on the white, and then red on blue, or it's just difficult to read. It's a little more contrasting than the first example, but it's still difficult to read, so avoiding those types of fonts. We might need to give that extra time to adjust to lighting. We allow some students to leave class just a little bit early to reduce noise in the crowds in the hallway. Sometimes, once they get used to that, they're fine leaving regular time. Some students need that for the entirety of the year. Again, high contrast materials, reducing background clutter, and having a consistent room layout. We often like to write preferential seating into the IEP, to be near instruction and to be seated away from the window. And as shown in the images here, assign lockers closest to the most commonly used classroom, or assigning the cubby nearest to the door for easy access.
The most helpful modifications for me are using highly contrasting colors between the text and the background, so white on black or black on white. I sometimes read digital print in class, so low contrast can make my eyes get tired more quickly. Sitting near the teacher in class can also be very helpful for any questions that I might have. For evacuations, sitting near the door can be helpful as well. Leaving aisles besides desks clear is helpful to avoid any tripping.
Students with visual impairments often use a lot of assistive technology, and it could be one device, or it could be a combination of devices in order to access their materials in the classroom and in their entire environment. These can include CCTVs, tablets, handheld magnifiers, specialized software, and phone applications. Pictured on the left is a tablet magnifier, but it has a camera that can be used for distance viewing. The same device is in the top right, it's just without the camera at that point, and it's being used as just a tablet. Devices can also be purchased for more of a personal handheld size, such as the Juno magnifier, which is in the center. That device can take pictures, convert and save documents, and read text with different types of highlighted colors or line by line. The image on the bottom right is a Jupiter magnifier, which doesn't save documents like the middle device does, but it allows the user to invert text colors, use magnification, and change the brightness of the document.
For Braille displays, I use the Brown Note Touch, which I will show in a later slide. It has a screen with a Braille display and a keyboard that allows me to take notes, as well as access Google products such as Google Drive, Gmail, and Google Classroom. A Braille display shows a line of Braille, and it has buttons for me to move to the next or previous line of text. I also use an iPad that allows me to easily access any images or short text. I use the iPad in some of my classes on the Google Meet to see what's written on the viewboards. Voiceover is a text-to-speech program on the iPad that reads text or any buttons aloud so I can hear them. Jaws is also very similar, and I use that often on a Windows laptop with Microsoft Word and Excel. Braille is a form of written language for people who are blind, in which characters are represented by patterns of raised dots that are filled with the fingertips. In this slide, we have the letter C highlighted, which has the top two dots filled in, that's one and four, and we will demonstrate that as well later. A swing cell is a way to learn and practice Braille. It has movable pins that allow you to make each letter combination, so I can, that was how I learned Braille to start. A Perkins briler is what we move up to next, and it's very similar to a typewriter. You push the keys in different combinations to write the Braille on paper.
The Poly device, which is pictured on the bottom left, is a Wi-Fi-enabled Braille learning device with a smaller Braille display, and it uses music and games and other interactive activities for a younger learner. It also has an online portal for teachers and parents to do progress monitoring. From there, we move to more advanced, preferable Braille displays, like the Braille Note Touch that Sean described earlier. I will be doing a demo later of all these materials. Pictured on the right is the Juliette embosser, which is the instructor's and the aide's highly advanced briler. Myself and Sean's aide use software to translate Word documents into Braille on the computer, and then we send this document to this embosser. It's just like you would send a regular document to a printer, but in this case, it's embossing or printing single or double-sided Braille. There is nothing quiet about this device. When the hood is down, right now the hood is up, there's some hope there, it's a little quieter. When it's up and we have to fix it, it is extremely loud. So when this device is needed on a daily basis for a student, it's essential to have a space where we can shut the door so as to not disturb nearby instruction. And they do have personal-sized embossers available for the home. Team communication and aide support are essential for student success. So when a student like Sean needs documents converted on a daily basis, TBI, myself and his aide, who's in the audience with us tonight, we need access to the curriculum materials, a weekly schedule, so we know what order those materials are going to be converted, and we need all of the materials, PDFs, PowerPoints, picture content, as these can take hours to convert. We also decide together which materials we're going to fully convert, or we talk to Sean and see which apps he has on his iPad that are capable of converting those on his own, give him a little more ownership over the documents. And then we decide whether or not for charts or graphs, we want to describe these, or we want to actually print them and raise them as they are presented to us. After all of this, additional time is needed to piece together all of the picture representations with the actual Braille. Also, a big communication piece for teachers and TBI's aides into the student, it's extremely important to notify one of us, or most, you know, all of us, if possible, through email or texts even, if there's any last-minute room changes, whether it's like infestation of bees, too hot in the room, you know, we have to move somewhere else. Putting a sign on the door is, it just might not be suitable enough notice for a student who cannot easily access print.
It's also important to be aware of language and gestures that are used. It's important to try and avoid gestures such as pointing and saying something is over there. Specific language such as the garbage is to the left of the door is very helpful and makes it a lot easier for me to find something. I also have a one-to-one aide that helps me with preparing ground materials, as well as raised graphics for classes and PE as well at the start of new units. Aides help with any modifications that are necessary for sports. An aide can also assist in ensuring safe mobility from class to class. When watching movies or videos in a class, an aide can help describe what's on the screen. In this picture, Ms. Pierce is helping another student find the baseball and line it up with the bat, and an aide is very helpful for creating this modification.
So we're going to move to a couple of demonstrations of some of the devices that Sean had mentioned previously.
This device is the swing cell. As I mentioned, it's very helpful for learning Braille. It has six pins, and these are just two of them, for creating the different combinations of Braille letters. In this current orientation, that's how I would read it, on paper or on a Braille display with the two side-by-side columns. I can also open it up, so it has one row, and that's how I would type it on either the Brown Note Touch or the Perkins briler that I mentioned earlier. This is the, this is the Brown Note Touch that I use for most of my assignments. It has this row of the Braille display, where I can read in orientation with two columns. In front, it has these buttons for the next line or the previous line. Up top, we also have the keys in the second orientation I showed for typing any Braille. This is an example of a raised graphic that I would use for a class such as math. We have, we can use different textures that mean different things. So the solid line is the X and Y axis. We also have the function that the question is about, and the dotted lines are the asymptotes, which is also part of the question. And this is how I often do any questions in math or in social studies with maps as This is a map of the Albany International Airport and the terminals there, and it can be helpful for learning the area and especially planning ahead of time if I'm going to visit a place. And it's helpful with orientation and mobility, which we are covering in the next slide. Orientation and mobility is a profession specific to blindness and low vision that teaches safe and efficient travel skills to people of all ages. This can include cane skills, mapping skills, body awareness, web awareness, spatial relationships, and the use of assistive technology.
These are just a few examples of O&M training in action and what it can lead to. On the left is a classmate that I had during my training, and her guide dog is assisting her with a hike we took into the Rocky Mountains. In the middle is a young boy using an assistive mobility device, or an AMD. So it wraps around his waist, but has an extension, much like a cane, but with a much wider base to give him a barrier for obstacles. This device moves with him, so whichever way he turns, that obstacle detection is in front of him, and he's still able to use his hands and not have to worry about the fine motor control it takes to use a cane. So it takes a lot of the fear away from little kids who are, you know, just afraid to move. And then on the right is an example of what we looked like, what I looked like, in a cane and residential navigation training that I had to complete and we all have to complete as part of becoming an orientation mobility specialist.
Human guide allows someone with some vision or no vis, someone with some vision to guide someone with less or no vision around obstacles or from place to place. The person being guided holds either the wrist or above the elbow of the guide. It's important to communicate about the side that the guide should stand on, and the guide should also give verbal cues about changes in elevation or any upcoming obstacles.
On the right, we have just a picture from the back of the most standard position for sighted guide. The girl with the cane is a half step behind the guide, holding above the elbow. If it was a smaller, a much younger kid, age three to five, it's appropriate to hold the wrist, once you're beyond handholding. She can use her cane in forward position, which we'll show you shortly, or in non-use, which is how she has it here, where it's just straight up and not really being used for obstacles because she has the guide. The picture in the middle, the guide has brought her arm behind her back, which brings the person being guided also behind her. So if you're in an area that's narrow, like a stairwell, or a crowded hallway, or a doorway, this allows the team to move through without having to lose contact and then leaving the person who's being guided unaware of where they are in space. We never want to have anybody unaware of where they are in space. So as far as equipment goes, previously, we saw a student with an assistive mobility device, or the AMD. So the child in the top right needs to use a walker and an AMD together due to vision needs and physical therapy needs. So the walker is there to mostly assist in the physical mobility, while the AMD is used to assist in the obstacle detection in front of the kid, and still the student doesn't lose any use. In the, you know, they could stop, they're using their hands for the walker, but if they want to stop and explore, that's a possibility without having a cane or something else in their hand.
A cane is used to help detect drop-offs and obstacles while walking. I started using a cane when I was in kindergarten for moving around the school and outside. I also use a monocular, which helps reading signs or traffic lights outside that are farther away. A tactile, tactile, sorry, tactile map allows us to learn an area in town or a part of a store, such as the Albany Airport image. We can add shapes and lines to plan out crossing the street or to mark out an aisle in which has items that I might commonly use. On the bottom-left corner of the slide, you'll see a map of a four-way intersection in the shape of a plus sign. On the bottom-right corner of the slide, we have a map of the interior of the Sling Run's Market 32. And those are made on a felt board with Velcro, so we can stick the shapes on and make different designs. Phone applications such as Seeing AI also help to read text or product by taking a picture of a document and reading it aloud. Other apps such as Moveit and the CDTA app are helpful for planning out bus trips or any other public transportation by showing what stop is next. Sunglasses or a hat are helpful outside for blocking sunlight and makes it difficult for me to read, and I often use those with the monocular.
So we're going to move to demonstrate some of the equipment that he uses on a daily basis, though.
This is my cane that I use mostly outside or in school. I sleep very close in front of me, so I can feel anything, any drop-offs, any routes that I might come across. I can also fold it up like this to make it smaller for putting it away or putting it next to me in a desk. It also has white reflective tape to, for any cars or anything at night that you can This is a smaller cane that a student might use in elementary school. The height is just based on size and height of the student. It also has this heavier rolling ball in front, which allows for more control and also more feedback, so the student can feel more of what's in front of them. Often, the shorter canes do not fold because a younger student might have difficulty folding it, but some of them do fold. These are two examples of the monocular I would use for like outside. I just put it up to my left eye because that's where I have vision. I can read a sign or any traffic lights that are farther away. It's the larger the size, the more magnification it has. So for farther away, I use the longer one, and for closer up, I might, or for quick use, I might use the shorter monocular. So for farther away, I use the longer one, and for closer up, I might, or for quick use, I might use the shorter monocular.
And one final example of one of our canes. So this is an identification cane, or ID cane for short. It's designed much like the regular long white cane, but primarily used just for the identification purposes. So somebody with a really moderate to not-so-severe vision loss might just use this to identify themselves before a street crossing, just to get that out there to the drivers or just in an unfamiliar environment, just to do a quick check of what's at their feet. Sean could use this in conjunction with his cane if there's areas he's really familiar with, but he encountered a quick change in lighting that really was hard to adjust to. This could be an option for him just to take something out quickly and check his feet. You might have noticed with his, he has the blue base on the bottom here and the blue handle. They've gotten a lot more creative with their canes in the last years, and you could mix that up. It could have been a green top and a blue bottom. And this one's a standard red at the bottom. This one should have it as well. The main purpose is that it's reflective, and we try to keep the center of it, the white cane, because that's very symbolic of what it stands for.
The minimum age to get a guide dog is sixteen years old. People around someone with a guide dog should address the person and not the dog as to avoid distracting the dog from guiding. The dogs also follow a strict routine and diet, so other people should avoid feeding the dog. ADA law also says that a guide dog can travel anywhere that a human can travel, including the school setting.
So students typically undergo a four-to-six-week training with their guide dog while living at the school that is sponsoring the dog. Trainers work with the handlers to learn how to build a relationship with the dog, how to give proper commands, praise, and reprimands. One common misconception is that the dog knows exactly where to go at all times and does all the navigating for the handler. Navigation is almost fully directed by the handler, and the handler must have those solid navigational skills and training and cane skills in order to acquire a guide dog. Guide dogs are trained to disobey for commands if the dog senses danger for its handler. So while typically we think of dogs as obeying the handler, they want to please their handler, do whatever command they give, these ones are specifically trained that if my handler says forward and I sense a car coming, I would say no thank you and jump right in front of them. Dogs typically retire around age of ten, and handlers will be matched with a new dog if they so choose and retrained. In the school setting, the student needs to communicate with administration in order to set strict times and locations for the dog to relieve itself and eat. The student works with an O and M orientation mobility specialist to determine the best areas for the dog to sit with the owner in class and will practice the routes for the schedule with the dog and the owner together. On the top images, we see a former Bethlehem student, recently graduated, and she has her guide dog. The dog in the left is placing her paws up on the step to indicate that there is a raised step, and then she looks to her for praise or a treat. In the top right, the dog brings her to the door to show her where to open it. So she praises it if it's a common room. She doesn't always have to praise, well, she always praises but not always treats. So it's just that relationship that's built between the two of them. The bottom pictures are of another former student of mine with her guide dog at graduation and Campabilities. And Sean will cover that in our final slide, how the dogs go with you and all he likes to do for fun.
In addition to academics, there are many ways for people with visual impairment to access sports. I started running when I was around seven years old. I run track and cross-country as well for the school team. For cross-country, which is through the woods, I run with a guide runner next to me to avoid trees or other obstacles and roots on the trail. During track, I do not run with a guide runner because I have enough vision to see the people around me and the lines on the track. Campabilities is a sports camp for people with visual impairments. We do many sports such as running, swimming, and baseball. I will be a CIT this summer, so I'll be working with another camper with a visual impairment. The image on the left is at Campabilities Saratoga where I was practicing ice skating. The image in the bottom middle is me playing baseball at Campabilities as well. The bottom-right picture is me guiding one of my other friends who has no vision on the track. In this picture, I'm using a tether so he knows where I am at all times. When I'm running, I run with my guide right next to me, as shown in the top middle, on the top picture, where I'm running a cross-country race, and my guide is in the bright-colored shirt, so other people will know that he's a guide runner. The top-middle image is also a picture of me paddleboarding at Campabilities. And the top guide-runner picture is a recent cross-country race for the school team.
This is just a lovely picture of the Campabilities staff and students. It's aged five to eighteen. Sixteen is where they can start to become counselors in training. We'd love to, at this point, open it up to any questions.
I'm just going to start by saying thank you so much to both of you guys for coming and sharing all of this information with us. I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robyn.
You guys have any questions?
I have a question for Sean. How did you feel about the transition from elementary school to middle school to high school?
The transition from elementary school to middle school was a little bit nerve-wracking because I was not used to switching classes, but I worked on my schedule and I walked it ahead of time. So I was ready for it when it came. I also do that every year, so I kind of know where all my classes are, and I don't have to rely on reading any signs. I've done that every year, pretty much since middle school, so I feel pretty good about it.
And is there anything about any of the buildings that you would change if you could?
Personally, not really. I think it's really helpful with any braille signs that we have because if there is a new room, I can easily find that by reading the number on the door. So I've had a pretty good experience with all the buildings.
Great, thanks. John, do you have a question?
I don't have a question, Sean. I was going to say, you're still amazing. I met you preschool soccer. I was your coach. I coached for many years, and you were just this relentless overcomer who never, never, even had, had with another coach who was frustrated with you because you kept on kicking his daughter and had to tell him to stop getting angry with you because you had, you know, a vision impairment. So you're just awesome and just keep on, keep on being awesome. So it's great to see you.
Catherine. Sean Menjies, Catherine, and thank you so much for sharing your story and for really providing such a just enlightening presentation. It was neat to hear about your experience at Bethlehem. And I'm just wondering, is there, is there something that Bethlehem does really, really well to support students with vision impairments? And is there anything that we should have an eye on that we could be either improving or something that's coming in the future that could help the school plan to support visually impaired students?
I think it does a really good job, especially with technology, because any new technology that I've learned about has been available, especially with the Brown Note Touch, because those can be hard to get used to. But Ms. Pierce is very helpful with getting used to any new technology for any classes. And the school is also very, like, understanding, and all the students are understanding and willing to help out. So I think it's been a very good experience. I think just for any new student, because having low vision can be very different for any student. Like, I know some of my friends have no vision or some have, seem to have a lot of vision but might have trouble with certain things. So communication is the most important part to figure out what modifications are necessary.
Could I ask the same question? Ms. Pierce, where do you see, where do you see it excelling? Where do you, where should the district be putting some emphasis, new trends coming or just things to be aware of?
I mean, I do have to agree, like, the technology availability, staffing, you know, the help we get for him and other kids in the district that I have. I mean, they're not really wanting for anything, like, the technology that we recommend. We are able to get, we have assistive technology get involved, and so all the training is there. Another thing about communication, though, is it's this opportunity of welcome so much to kind of get out there what it's all about. And indeed, every student is different. And to have some of that time available for the team that's involved with a student, I just think it's so important to say, what can they see that we can figure out? What is your role as a general education teacher? What is your role as a specialized teacher? And then kind of that integration, if there's other services, how that all plays in? And then what does it look like if a TVI is coming into the classroom? So just some more opportunities to have that cohesiveness among a team and the opportunity and the time to really discuss that student in depth.
Thank you. And Sean, congratulations on Eagle Scout. That is always impressive. And yeah, just congratulations. I don't, you guys stole my questions. I guess the one thing I don't know about you is what you want to study in general.
I'm interested in either computer science or business. I've taken a few computer science classes and I really enjoyed it. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on which one, but I like both of those.
Very cool. Congratulations and thank you.
Yeah, thank you again.
Thank you. Sean, do you want a pin? It's an eagle pin.
I can come over there if I'll give one to Ms. Pierce.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on an agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Next, item six, action items. A, it's the resolution to certify the 2023-2024 school district budget vote results. Whereas the Board of Education has examined and tabulated such statements and determined the number of votes cast for the 2023-2024 school district budget. It is hereby declared that the 2023-2024 school district budget passed with seventy-eight point seven-seven percent of voter approval, with two thousand one hundred and seventy-four votes in favor and five hundred and eighty-six votes against. If I could have a motion to approve the resolution. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? B, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action item number one. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? C, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through ten. Second, any discussion?
Holly.
Go ahead.
Hey, just for action item one, I know we talked about the loss of the world language teacher due to enrollment in Latin. I don't know who it's most appropriate part. Can I just understand where the PE, music, art, and science teachers are coming from?
Well, they're K-12, but it's also due to enrollment in sections. So it's not just one level because some of it, because they cross over to different buildings and levels. It's a combination of course requests at the high school, sectioning at the elementary, and also the middle school. Same thing with science teachers. Science is due to actually course request at the high school.
So the point three, science is high school?
High school. And the other ones are across K-12.
So, I'm sorry, so like point five art is a half person who travels to multiple buildings or woods?
They can. They're K-12, so some of them go between the middle school, elementary, high school, middle school. So it's a combination. It's not just one thing. Art, some of that is course request at the high school, and then some of it is sectioning at the elementary as well.
Holly. I just want to say, I know that we, and thanks Willow for raising this. I know we've discussed these changes a couple of times, and, you know, I know that this is the direction the district or the administration feels like we need to go. I just want to say, I've gotten, I've gotten a number of families and folks reaching out specifically around art, music, PE, the specials classes and the specials teachers with concern about, you know, what will this mean for opportunities? And then teachers concerned with what this will mean for workloads for their colleagues and other folks within the departments as everything shifts. We talked about the issue of traveling between, between schools and how that can impact teachers. And I've heard about this from, from a couple of the different specials areas. So I just want to raise that I'm happy to vote in support, but I want to keep this at the forefront of our minds as we're looking at the budget for next year and as we're looking at our needs and structuring to make sure that we're providing the support and providing the specials with the position of things. So it might, so to clarify, when we propose the budget, we base the reductions and additions based on our projections at that time. So we're still in the middle of scheduling. We don't finish scheduling for a while. In fact, there's a lot of pieces that are still moving parts. If we find that, for example, point nine PE is too much of a reduction when we actually look at travel between buildings or things that come up, then we would come back to the board and say that we need to reinstate point two of that. So it's, it's still. It's still a conversation. Correct. Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that. That's very helpful. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? D, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through seven. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? E, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through five. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item seven is recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have anybody who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. On May twenty-second at six-thirty, we have a policy committee meeting here at the high school. May twenty-fourth from four to six, so you guys have it on your calendars, is our 2023 retiree reception at Garden Bistro. May thirty-first at five-thirty is a facilities committee meeting. June seventh, we are having our, is our next regular board meeting, anticipating executive session beforehand, as well as the 2023 tenure teacher reception. And then on June eighth at five-thirty is the audit committee meeting. And I believe June eighth is also the Spectrum concert. Is that correct? I think afterwards, starting at, or is that a different day?
No, I think you're right. Yes, Spectrum concert.
It's also that night, so.
And John, the audit committee, did we, do we need another board member?
We do.
We do need, so, because we have to have at least two board members. And Willow's the only one who said they can attend. And we have the auditors coming, so.
Okay, I will double-check, but I think I tentatively put it on the calendar, so I can fill in.
Okay, thank you.
But I will double-check. But yeah, I was planning on going to the Spectrum concert afterwards, so as long as we're done. But I will double check. But yeah, I was planning on going to the Spectrum concert afterwards, so as long as we're done.
We'll try to keep the orders brief.
Good luck.
All right. We do need to go back into executive session to continue our discussion of the superintendent evaluation. Could I have a motion to go into executive session? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this point, our big friends who are visiting, you guys can come up and sign out, and you are excused.